Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, July 6th, 2020. Regular meeting of the Town of Easton Planning and Planning Board. And I'm gonna quickly read. Into the record, in keeping with the ongoing emergency order from Governor Charlie Baker to limit gatherings and maximize social distancing, and under legislation passed to address remote board meetings during the emergency declaration, this meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board members will be remote, and remote attendance shall count towards a quorum. The meeting will be available on eCat. You can, to use Zoom, you'll need to download the link, which you can get through the town's website. So just to ensure we have a quorum, I'll do a roll call. Strange here?
Strange here.
That's in here.
Here.
I heard Amas, right? I saw the lips move, just in here.
Amas needs to unmute.
Oh yeah, he's still, can we do that? Are we gonna, I just unmuted him.
Okay.
I hit the button, didn't change anything. Amas, unmute. Oh, it won't do it on my end.
No, because he's co-host. He's gotta do it himself.
I need to write, Amas, unmute.
I can do that, that's.
I'm looking for a pen.
There it goes.
Hold up a whiteboard.
So anyways, yeah, so congratulations to Chris Anderson and his lovely wife Marissa on the birth of their daughter.
Thank you very much.
Chris is. There's Amas, now we can hear him. And I wanna thank Andrea for filling in this week, as we know, Imei left on June 26th. And I did announce it at the last meeting, because it wasn't public yet, but now it is public. And I think a couple of you might know, but starting on Monday, Stephanie Danielson will be coming back to her previous role, Director of Planning in Easton, so. But again, so thank you, Andrea. I know you're very busy, and we appreciate you coming in, hanging out with us. So, we have a quick agenda here. It's a little summer gift. The first thing we have is a continued public hearing for 370 Center Street for the special permit duplex. And I think I saw, I know Robert, did you have to do the mullin rule on this?
I did do the mullin.
Alright.
I watched, I watched the video.
I did as well.
Great, alright.
I just brought Frank forward.
Much appreciated for doing that, guys. And sorry I had to give you all that Russia email this morning when I got Debs and I, Amas, I knew was having trouble getting sworn in. I was in a panic. But I didn't wanna tell these guys the same thing as in two weeks ago.
Not a problem.
Frank, you there?
I'm here. I guess my picture isn't there, but.
Best you've looked in years.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
I'm bringing up your picture, though. So I'm gonna share my screen, folks. Can you see my screen?
There we go. So Frank, the floor is yours.
Okay. Well, I guess. Well, we've submitted revised site plan, and we submitted revised architectural plans. And the rendering plans also. We just submitted some new ones last week. And that was at the request of the secretary, I guess, or, I mean, I got the message through the secretary that there was no date or title block on the renderings. Those two sheets that, you know, show kind of a detailed elevation.
Would you like me to go to that now, Frank?
I guess so.
Okay.
So Frank, while she looks that up, I was looking on the site plan, because there was just a couple little notes that I saw missing that we certainly can add it. But I saw that the latest site plan I saw uploaded was revised through 63.
Yes.
Did you do?
Right, that is, that is the latest site plan.
Okay, okay. So yeah, so for the board members that weren't here at the last meeting, we we basically had finished, we had a couple things we discussed on the site plan. We looked at the houses, but the applicant at the time, because we only had four members, and this being a special permit, you need a super majority, you need at least four affirmative. So they chose not to go forward at that time, just. So that's why we're, so that's why they're still here. So we don't have a lot of revisions. Frank, the one thing that I had noticed, or two things, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe the board members can help me. But we talked about two things, the trees at the street, which you showed, and then the stone wall in the vicinity of the north property line. And there had been, I thought we had discussed, we're gonna put a note on there, you know, trees to remain and stone walls to remain. Which I didn't see, that certainly could be added later, we don't have to hold things up for that. Or did I misunderstand?
Well, maybe I misunderstood. I, I thought that the request was to show the existing trees and the stone wall, and then have something in the conditions of approval that said that they would have remained.
Okay.
Both, I mean, I can.
I think, well, yeah, I mean, I think if we could get it on the plan, because you know the problem is, people working out on site aren't gonna have the decision, you know, they're gonna have the plan.
Yep.
So if you wouldn't mind, assuming this passes tonight, if you just, just for the trees, if you can put that on.
I will.
We'll put it in the decision anyways, but.
Is, for my own clarification, Greg, is the stone wall located along the northern property line only? Or is it also along the street alongside?
I think it's, there's a little bit on the street and the northern, right, Frank?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, two, those two locations. Do board members, do you guys have any, did I miss anything?
Greg, we, we talked a little about backyard, especially for one of the units. And I don't remember what the discussion was, if we wanted any changes in order to facilitate backyard space. I think it's for.
Well, if I, Frank, I'll take this and I'll let you fill up, as that was two meetings back, and as I understand it, we were talking about, excuse me, the unit to the east, you know, the furthest back from the road. And that's where behind the garage, they showed the grading, and they showed the proposed limit of work to along the northern property line. So that was sort of the yard, if you will, for that, for that unit. So that had changed. That's what came, that was revised according to that discussion, right, Frank? Do I have that right?
No, correct, yes. If you look at the site plan, as it's been revised, and I'll just wait one quick second.
Sorry, bringing it, there we go.
Yep.
Bring it up a little closer, there we go.
That's, that, that's good, right there. And if you look, you can see the tree line to the east of the building. And that's a proposed tree line. And it's, it's labeled as such, even though you, I can't quite see it, just because the pictures are in the way, the people's pictures, you guys are all.
You can, you can click it down.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, Andrew is kinda showing it, so.
So in doing that, we create some yard area that's off of that slope that's in the back of the house. You know, there's yard area in addition to that, because that's a fairly steep slope, it's three to one behind the building, so.
Good sledding for the kids.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we did expand it to create a little more level yard beyond that slope.
Can you see it now, Frank?
Yes, I can see it. And that blue line is what we'd clear the trees to, so that we'd be able to create a little more yard for that unit.
You good with that, huh?
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to make sure that that was included in the plan.
Sure. Anybody else?
I think with the condition for the trees, as you guys discussed during the last meeting, I think this checks all the boxes for me.
Yeah, it looks good to me as well.
There are trees, for my own clarification, there are a couple trees that come up the driveway. There are, do you want all trees that are shown on the plan to be saved, or can you be more clear?
Maybe a note.
We discussed, we discussed the substantial trees, and by that, I mean, there's a little bit, I'm trying to read what Frank's got marked.
They're 20 inches, 10. 36.
Yeah, and then there's like 2 to 12 inch, so I mean, anything, Frank, anything 6 inches and above, does that sound good?
Yeah, I guess so. There's one that's about halfway down the driveway. It's a pretty substantial tree, it's a 20-inch maple.
That looks like that has to go, because of the grading.
Yeah, that one's kinda gonna be involved in some of the re-grading of the.
That one, it's going away.
So that, I would like to not have to.
Yeah.
Check. And then there's one just north of the septic tank that I think may not be able to remain, just because of.
This one?
Location.
The one that's right under South 8645?
Or this one?
That one, yes.
Yeah.
Those two, I think, you know, would be tough to keep.
Well, so why don't you, on that same plan, just put, you know, those two trees to be removed?
Okay.
Because obviously with the grading, they have to, so. And in fairness, our conversations had always been along the street, so.
Yeah, I think the intention was to keep the trees on the street, so.
Right.
You cannot see the property that well from the street and keep the nature of what we have today.
Yes. That's how I understood it, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that's fair. I'm, that's how I feel. Anybody else? So, if we're good, so we need to, would you like us to close the public hearing?
I would.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for 370 Center Street.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Strange, I?
Sure, I.
Anderson, I.
Yes, I.
Stetson, I.
And so, is there any, oh, okay, so would someone care to make a motion on the special permit?
Anybody in the public?
Well, I was gonna do that once I got a second.
Okay.
But that, because that's what I was thinking.
Correct.
Motion to approve the planets presented.
Second.
Is, and now, any further discussion, including the public?
Raise your hand. Because I'm sharing my screen, I can't see who's raising their hand, the attendees.
Let's see.
But all of you are hosts, so you.
I don't see anybody raising their hand.
No.
And, yeah, I see mostly people that are gonna be presenting to us. So, in Eastern Cable, so, alright. Where were, okay, so we had a second, alright, so all those, any further discussion? Sorry about that. Alright, so hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Strange, I?
Stetson, I.
Anderson, I.
I think we got everybody there. They all kinda came in at once. Was that unanimous, I think? Peter, did you vote?
Yes.
And the affirmative?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so that is, that's unanimous, alright.
Okay, so let's stop that.
Alright, thank you, Frank.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck. And so just get that plan in, you know, Stephanie will be back, starts on Monday, so if you wanna.
Okay.
You know the drill. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Good night.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Good night.
Okay, so we're going past all the renderings. We're going past the pretty site plan. We're gonna go to the next project is.
So the next is a request to continue the public hearings for Sawmill Village. The definitive subdivision and special permits to July 20th. Who would like the honor of making that motion?
Motion to continue Sawmill Village to July 20th.
Second.
Any further discussion?
If I may?
Yeah.
A Conservation Commission hearing was continued to July 27th at the request of the applicant, because they've been unable to prepare their floodplain letter of map amendment. So you won't have that information.
So we'll be, right, so we're doing the same, I guess we have to continue it now, just because it's on the agenda, right, to that date, and then next meeting we'll jump out. So do you have a date that they're gonna meet, ConCon?
The 27th?
Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
They expect to come, they expect to come back on the 27th.
Okay, I got you.
And I'll know, I'll know on the 13th if that is, if they need, if they choose to continue.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, did we make the motion? Yeah, we did, we're discussing it, right?
Yeah, but we, we gave a date. Inside our date, we need to say the motion is to continue when we have the necessary information.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna insist to July 20th on the agenda, so I'll just stick to the agenda, and then we can jump, we can do this next week, you know, or next meeting.
I agree with you, Amos, that's one of the advantages of COVID.
Okay, so.
I made the motion, was there a second on the motion to?
That's what I was just gonna ask.
I seconded it.
Alright, all those in favor? Strange, I?
Sure, I.
Anderson, I.
Yes, I.
Alright, that's unanimous. Okay, so the next one, so I know we received a letter today on 38 Center Street withdrawing the special permit for the mixed use, and withdrawing the site plan, but then I know I saw a note from Greg Driscoll, who I see is on here.
Here, I'm gonna.
That he wanted, so I just want to, so we are, we've cleared our agenda of this, I don't wanna get too, I don't wanna get into a site plan review, frankly, because I, I didn't review the site plan, because I was told last week they were withdrawing. And we need to be careful, because you can't withdraw and then discuss. But, so with that, Greg will open up your mic and hear what you have to say, I guess, but this, this isn't a site plan review, just wanna make that clear. You there, Mr. Driscoll?
Well, he's, well, he's muting, unmuting himself. Greg, are you there? Greg's there.
I'm here. It says, can I start your video, because the host has stopped it.
Again.
Either way.
And you, okay, I'll make you co-host also. I don't understand why this is doing this. There you go. Okay, speak away.
Alright, alright. Give me everyone. So, yeah, we are, we went to the zoning board, and what we're gonna, coming out of that, we come up with a plan of going back to them and filing for variance for the use. So therefore, we're going to withdraw the special permit for the multifamily, the mixed use, and the site plans as well. It will refile the site plans for the proposed multifamily use. The site plans will be modified just a little bit, just to reflect that it's now multifamily, and the correct parking calculations and everything for the multifamily use. And we were just asked that we can apply the fees already paid for the just withdrawn plans and site plan endorsement and special permit to be applied to the one that I'm about to do, either at the end of the evening or tomorrow morning, for the multifamily site plan endorsement.
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, Andrew, I don't see why we couldn't waive the fee, correct?
No, it seems very clean to have, to have it reopen with the new use.
Seems fair. And Greg, I would just, and you probably heard, I think you were logged on earlier, that Stephanie is coming back, and she'll be here on Monday. And I remember, there was a couple things on the site plan I was kinda questioning, so just check in with us next week. And, and then, so what, do you have, have you filed yet? That's not my house. Have you filed yet for the?
It's not my dog.
Chris, that sounds like a dog I know. Have you, so have you filed yet for the variance?
Yes.
Okay.
Those plans were.
That's not, that's not before our next meeting, I take it.
That is scheduled for the 14th.
And. Later on in the agenda, you're being requested to prepare comments for that variance.
Ah, alright, well, had I read further down. Alright, so I think we're good.
Okay.
Alright, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, we have a request to continue the public hearing, 58 Mill Street.
I'm sorry, you need to vote to withdraw and to waive the application fees for 38 Center?
Motion to accept a withdrawal for 38 Center Street and to apply the application fees to a future application.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Ah, strange, I?
Sure, I. Anderson, I.
That's an I. Yes, I.
Alright, 58 Mill Street, we need someone to make a motion to continue to July 20th, Our Ridge Estates, special permit and subdivision plan.
Motion to continue to the 20th for this.
Second.
All those in favor? Strange, I?
Sure, I.
Anderson, I.
Stetson, I.
Yes, I.
Very good, alright, continued board business, 42 Randall Street, the A and R. So I know the plan has been revised a couple times, and everything is good to go. Andrew, do you have anything you wanted to mention on that?
Yes, the, do you want me to share the screen? Are you guys comfortable with what it looks like?
I checked it, it looked right to me.
Okay, good. The, this was an interesting project, because the, we, the, actually, the engineer is here, Eric Diaz, so I'm gonna promote him up. I think he can speak well to the topics. I am perfectly fine with approving it as he's presenting it.
I think we're, we're, we're fine with it. I know you had raised some issues the last couple days, I just wanted to give you that opportunity, but if we're ready as a board to make a motion, we certainly can. It's just an A and R.
Okay. My issues were, were that the local wetland line is different than the state wetland line, and your zoning only acknowledges the state wetland, which the project manager, the project engineer recognized would create confusion in the development, while we went for development permitting, and so chose to put the local perm, the local wetland line on this plan. And then adjusted the upland to have contiguous, to have, to have the minimum contiguous upland needed relative to the local wetland line, which I appreciated.
Well said. Mr. Diaz, since you have joined us, and you're, do you have anything you need to add? I think we're ready to vote, but if you wanna.
All I can do is mess it up from here.
That's my thoughts exactly. With all due respect, of course.
Understood.
As a wise man once told me many years ago, when I was presenting to a Conservation Commission, and I decided to wax poetic, he said, "You are snatching victory." Vice versa, so anyway.
There are two plans on climate eyes from 73, so which one are we, would you like us to approve?
They're actually the same plan. There was a snag when I was trying to upload it to parameterize, and I think I hit the upload button twice.
Okay, so the exact same.
They're the exact same plan. If it's dated 73, they're the same thing.
Okay, that's my only question.
Sure.
Anybody care to make a motion?
Make a motion.
To.
As shown.
Second.
Suzanne, I'll let you decide who won that race. Any, any comments from the public? I don't see anybody waving. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Strange, I?
Yes, I.
Anderson, I.
That's an I.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, good luck. Alright, now we have two ZBA requests for comment. First one is variance 20-8, 123 Depot Street. This is, as you may recall, this is the house on Depot Street, which is part of the, it abuts what is Korea's Plaza. And back when we were working with the development team on this, we had had discussions, and probably had them publicly as well, that we knew at some point the house would need to be broken off from the development for both insurance and for financing reasons. And so that's, that's all this is. And you can see on the plan, there, you know, there's a retention basin to the north, and then the parking, so that's, they're creating, trying, you know, proposing to create an 8945 square foot lot. And then the, then the rear setback of 10 feet, which encroaches over, so those are the two variances, but this was all, this was this is always anticipated in the discussions. And so, this is just, this is just, this is, this jives with everything that we discussed with the applicant at the time. That's my two cents.
Greg, the only question I have is, where you said the rear setback of two feet, should the arrow?
I said 10 feet, I'm sorry, 10 feet.
Sorry, that's what I meant to say. Should it show where the minimum distance is? Right now, it doesn't show like the shortest distance.
Doesn't.
It's not the minimum there, if, if that is a dimension, difficult to see.
It, yeah, this is, I agree with you, Chris. It, it has.
Oh, you're talking, that corner is actually closer than 10 feet.
Yeah, it doesn't have the setback distances, it has the, it has the existing residence on 123.
Yeah, it's. One of the building is really where the shortest distance is, so if they wanna call that out maybe instead, otherwise, looks fine to me.
This distance right here might be what he was speaking to. Annotate, this distance right here?
The rear, the top, as we're looking at the plan, the top left corner, where he shows the.
Yeah.
They show a 13, going left to right, yeah, that's, obviously, Chris was right, that's closer than 10 feet, so we could just note that in our.
Sorry, the application says 10 feet.
Right, what's, yeah, clearly, it's interpolating, maybe it's seven or eight feet, but it's still.
Yeah.
Still the same, it is what it is, the detention points there.
Right.
Mr. Prue is a lawyer, not an engineer, I guess. Oh, he's not here, though, forget, I was trying to, but he was here, I don't see. Just trying to have some fun with him.
I won't take any offense to that.
Is it, is it 10 feet, but actually, it's 10 feet to an area in which will be a basin, so.
I'm sorry, what?
It's not 10 feet to another building or property, it's 10 feet to a basin, right?
Well, it's 10 feet to a property line, but right, yeah, I mean, your point is, you know, when Imei, the last phone call I had with Imei closing out things, he recommended that we put a buffer on the commercial, that nothing could be built there, but, you know, it's a special permit, we have control, and it's already protected, where there's, there's a, there's a buff, there's a, you know, detention basin and the parking spaces, so.
They don't mention this, but it's a lot more non-conforming, because it's, it's smaller now, too, and that's.
Yes, that's the, that's the two things they call out in the, for the variance, the smaller lot. It went from an acre and a half down to, you know, the 8945, and then the setback, which they call as 10 feet, but as, yeah, it looks like it's 7 feet, probably. Those are the two, two variances they're requesting.
Make a motion to. Make a motion to recommend the variances.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Greg, on the.
Yeah, if you just make that note about the, uh, the discrepancy and the dimension.
Oh, yes, yeah, yes, with the note.
Suzanne, you following us, I'm assuming? You're usually pretty good with that.
Um. Greg, on the relief requested, I just see rear yard relief written down in the form. Unless I'm looking at, unless there's a separate form.
You mean, yeah, now if you read his, if you read the, um.
Brief?
If you read the brief that Attorney Prue submitted, it calls out the two.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't read the.
So he may have, yeah, he may have missed it on the form, but it's, it's, uh, it's clearly spelled out in the brief.
Uh, the, the only thing that looks a little funny here is a walkway that goes into a parking lot, into a parking place, actually. But it is.
Well, and if you read, i- if you read the, uh, the brief, it also says they're gonna put a fence there, which that would come before us anyways. And that, that walkway, you know, they added, um, so when, when they come back for, I suspect this project will be coming back for some, some, um, modifications. We could, you know, we could either eliminate that walk, I, we'd probably eliminate that walkway, frankly, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta put a fence there. That we, we could, you can make that party a decision if you wanted to, you know.
The walkway to the, to the east?
Yeah, the walkway that head starts the parking lot. And, and then there, in the brief, there, they, um, discussed putting a fence there.
Okay.
Doesn't mean they couldn't have.
The general idea, Greg, is I don't know who is the owner of the property now, but probably you wouldn't have a design that protects future, uh, people from having. This is a, this is a house that is going to be crammed there in the corner the way it is. Uh, they need to make the best they can with this situation, right?
Well, you know, again, that they, at the request of the historical commission and, and of our board, they, they kept that house. And, and they, I think in fairness, they wanted to anyways. They, they like, you know, that's right on the edge of a residential neighborhood. But like I said, we knew just from experience, we know both for insurance reasons and then financing, um, they were gonna be forced to break off this residential property from the commercial. Um, and you'd want to do that, especially where there's, there's parking and where there's a detention base. So they're just, this is just a, uh, you know, a, a kind of a completion of an anticipated phase. So ideally, you know, you might not want the house crammed in a corner like that, but, but it, it saved an existing, you know, a, a historically significant house in the, in the old neighborhoods, so.
So, so there could be a purpose to that walkway that we don't, haven't realized, like such as the gate. So I don't see any reason to really mention that unless we feel that.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
I agree.
And if the application was just for one variance, we should just recommend the one variance requested.
But it's, it's for two. If you read the proof, brief, it says two. I mean, there's plenty of time. There's discrepancies between the form and the, I mean, they're, they're going, um, I mean, I, I think we're here to, to, we're just commenting on the variance. If we wanna talk that it, there's a discrepancy, that's fine, but we should address both of them. Cause I suspect that the ZBA will address both of them at the meeting. Cause it is spelled out in the brief.
And you have the last sentence.
Doesn't the brief trump the form? Attorney Stetson?
I would, I would say that probably the answer is yes.
Yeah. Cause, you know, the point being, you can get more in a brief, you're there, you know, a form gets the ball rolling, but the brief really gets into the, you know, the details.
Yeah, the last sentence of the brief sums it up.
Um, alright, so we have a motion, right? That was our discussion. Um, are we, any, any further discussion? No? All those in favor of the recommendation? Strange eye?
Strange eye.
Anderson eye.
Stetson eye.
Yeah, they might.
Very good. That's unanimous. Next is, uh, thirty-eight Center Street, variance twenty-dash-nine. Um, and, you know, the, as you remember, we, we voted, or we, we recommended not to. Approve the mixed use, um, at our last meeting, and that was not approved. Not saying that's why they did it, they're just, it's what it was. And, uh, so now they are looking, um, just to go to four, uh, add two apartments. There's two existing, to make it a four-family, um, uh, multifamily, four-unit multifamily, which I think was the direction the ZBA, um, was, was recommending they go. So, um, I'll open up the floor. There's thoughts, comments, questions from you guys. Oh, Mr. Disco has appeared. Do you have anything to add to this, Greg?
Uh, no, I think it's a great project. Um. Um, no, not really. Uh, this is the, uh, what, um, Andrew just brought up here. That is the set plans that we submitted to zoning, um, that I'll be uploading either later tonight or tomorrow. To a new site plan endorsements, uh, application. And. Really, it's pretty much the same. We moved, uh, those two parking spaces in front of the garage into the garage. Don't really need them in front now, and we didn't need a handicap spots. We took that out. Uh, that garage is actually, um, as deep as the building. That's where the, um, funeral home used, used to, uh, park the limousines and hurses. Uh, so it's actually, you could probably fit six cars in those, those garages, but, uh.
So what's the hardship that, um, that is believed to want, you know, allowing multifamily housing in a residential zone?
Uh, well, that is a question for the attorney. Uh, he prepared the zoning application. I just provided the plans for him to upload that. Uh, I can see they could find his brief, but.
I mean, is that the, is that the, uh, primary criteria for a, a granting of a variance?
Uh, yeah. I don't think I have it right away here, so I don't.
Okay, it's here on primed eyes. So it says, economic conditions over the last five years have been unprecedented and still this property has not sold. Over the past five years, it has been shown that literal enforcement would result in blight and the impossibility of the current owner to use the existing building. So who's the existing owner?
Uh, the, the current owner is, uh, the car rights still.
That's the, the former, the, the former owner, not, not the.
Are the applicant? Are you asking about the applicant or?
Oh, yeah, so the, the, right, so the, the owner is not the applicant, is that?
Correct. They have it under agreement pending.
And the car rights have owned it for?
Uh, I don't, for a long time. They, they ran the funeral home.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
And it's been, hasn't been used as a funeral home for more than the two years, so it could revert back anyway. Or need various to revert back anyway.
So the lots, this property, you can't, it's not, it can't be developed as a, as a single-family residence. It, it's, it's just. It's not feasible?
Well, there's already two, um, apartments existing.
And how many apartments do they wanna have?
Four. It'll be owner occupied. Yeah, four total. This is two existing and then we add two more for four total.
Well, I mean, the location, if that's something that could be considered, seems reasonable for this, but, I mean, if.
Yeah, I think, I mean, to that point, I think an argument could be made that, you know, we're always talking about diverse housing types and walkable neighborhoods. And this is, um, you know, you, you're on the positive, you say, okay, you're adding, you know, two, two more households that could, you know, couldn't, can walk and enjoy the amenities, the downtown, the parks.
We also have, I mean, we have other areas in town that, you know, we're looking to set economic development, right? And it would be the same as a, you know, a duplex becoming a multifamily just because it's, you know, the owner can make more money, I guess, I mean.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's more money for the town and for the people doing this.
Well, yeah. I'll just leave it up to the others to make a motion and I'll vote how I choose.
Well, what I wanted to ask the board, because I'm relatively new, what is the precedent of multifamilies in this area of downtown?
It, I'm looking on Google Earth and it looks like there's probably a three-family right next to it.
There are, you know, for example, Saint, first place I ever lived in Easton, Saint Mark's, uh, you know, Saint Mark's Church. Well, now it's the, the funeral home, actually. But across from that is an old Victorian house. That's a, that's a three-family. There are, there are multifamilies here and certainly there are somewhere around the corner. You know, and I think, you know, if this was to, to, to Peter's example, um, and I'm, you know, I'm neutral on this. I'm, I'm up to whatever the board wants to do. Um, I, 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 I think a case could be made, like I said, you know, the diverse housing and it's in that neck of the woods. And someone, you know, why, what about making this a single family? This is an enormous structure. It has very little yard, so I think you're gonna have. Um, and to make this a single-family house, I mean, it's, it, it's, I mean, it's giants. It's two to begin with. To keep it as two, I could see where someone looks, they go, it's just too large to have two units. You know, if your average apartment size in Massachusetts last year was six-hundred-and-eighty-five square feet, um, I bet you these would probably come in a thousand. This has to be at least a four-thousand square foot structure. I think it's enormous. Um.
Oh, that makes sense, yeah. So they have an existing building that would be an economic hardship to tear down or try to turn into a, you know, a single family.
Right, and, you know, it's.
Doesn't help me with it, doesn't help me with the four, four units, but, I mean.
Right, no, I mean, hey, that, you know, it is what it, I'm, and I know, I know, I know what you're saying. Um, and we don't wanna go and turn every, um, you know, every large house in Easton into four families. But, do we, you know, it's.
There, Peter, there is also a narrative here about this house not being able to, to sell. And I would assume that eh, the people trying to, in real estate, trying to sell this, probably will think that someone will, might buy it, uh, as a single family and renovate it. I don't think it's going to, I, I, I am not a real estate expert, but I, I don't think in downtown on this place that, that will be attractive to anyone.
I agree. And we don't, you know, luckily we don't have that many old funeral homes in Easton that, you know, are economic hardships. Um, so this is a special case, I suppose, unless there are.
Yeah, I mean, the real question is, I think, is, because it's already a two-family. The question is going from two to four and does it, you know, so, does it make, you know, might make sense for some of us, might, might not for others.
That's okay, yeah. I mean, so we have this one, then we have one up on, on day, at the end of Day Street, right? Uh, you know, day and, um, off day, so, you know, so just, so just add a few, you know, as over the, from the R D here.
Greg, will, will discount of affordable housing too? So it will raise.
No, I don't believe so. I, I saw nothing in the brief that, you know, mentioned doing affordable housing or D H C D S H I. I think this is just for market rate apartments, what they'd be looking to do.
The question Amos is asking is, are all, are all rental units considered, um, counted toward the affordable housing index?
I think they will.
Now, they have to go through the subsidized program and, you know, qualify in different matters. I don't think they, they're probably not going through that program.
Yeah, that was my question.
So board.
My thought.
So our choice is we can, we can, we don't have to do anything. We can, we can comment or we can do nothing. So whatever, whatever you guys, um, someone wants to make a motion, you can. Uh, if we don't make a motion, then we just, we just vacate it, move on to our next item.
One other comment I wanna make is I do like how a lot of the, or not a lot, but a decent portion of the pavement is being removed and to be loaned and ceded. At least on the. North boundary and then on the south boundary where the garage door is now. That will definitely help them make, make it look less commercial.
Yeah, I, 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 I think my thought on this is, uh, it needs to be done right. And that includes landscape, of course, but also the plan. So we will need to see a plan in which this is executed in a way in which, eh, improve the downtown and not the patched together, eh, eh, design that really doesn't contribute.
So to that point, keep two, two things. One, this will, if this passes ZBA, they will come before us for site plan review, which we will get into more detail about, you know, the exterior, things like that. Uh, but in, in terms of the structure itself, uh, it would just be site plan review. We wouldn't have a, a special permit. Um, we wouldn't have, we'd have no purview over the exterior of the building. Doesn't mean you can't mention things, but it's not, you know, it's, it's site plan review, which is defined, our, our purview is pretty well defined in the rules and regs.
Do we know? I kinda go back and forth on these a little bit because I think Peter's questions and comments on this are, are, were spot on, really. I mean, if we were sitting on ZBA, I'm not sure how we would look at this. Um, that being said, and the reason I say I kinda, I waffle, uh, is because I, I do think that this is probably a benefit, given the history of, of this, um, property. And, you know, so, and I, I wonder, I'm throwing this out more for discussion purposes than anything. I wonder if they're looking to us not necessarily for the sort of looking at the elements here of what they need to do to qualify for a variance. But to say, you know, does this fit within our overall view on how that land should be used? If it's the latter point, which I think that it probably is, you know, I don't think this is a, this is a bad thing here. Um, you know, it's certainly not getting any use right now, and it is mostly a residential neighborhood over there, you know, right, right near the park. Of course, there's the, the, you know, the convenience store, um, and the little restaurant in the, in the neighborhood. But other than that, I mean, this is really a, the, pretty, pretty much a residential area. So, I mean, I think it fits within the overall scope of what we'd probably like to see there. Um, but I tend to agree. If, if Peter's points are that this doesn't necessarily check off all the, the boxes for a variance, I think I'd probably agree with you there, so.
I mean, yeah, I, I, that's sort of how I feel. I mean, as you have, maybe I don't wanna double the size of my house, but, you know, it's, it doesn't have a, it's not a conforming lot. So, I mean, that sounds like a hardship to me, so it just, I just don't see how, where this is a special situation because it, it's a multi-family in, you know, um, in a residential zone.
Yeah, you know, I, I think, I think Robert hit the nail on the head. Um, that, you know, you know, sometimes variance is right. Hardship is, you know, it's, it's, I was gonna say laughable. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's bendable, right? Um, but I could say, sure, this, this, well, this checks off. Like I said, you know, keeping, you know, I, I, I suspect, I don't know. I suspect they're not changing the exterior of this building, my, you know, in terms of the shape of it anyways. I'm gonna do some things inside. So, you know, we, we know what it is. Um, it keeps, you know, the remnants of a historical house in town. Um, and, yeah, I mean, and this, it is unusual, cause it started, you can see this is an expanded farmhouse through the years, converted to, um, to the use of a funeral home. And, and maybe was even added on for that, who knows? So you end up with a, a really large house on a really small lot. So I can understand from a, from a, why they're trying to go with, you know, four units. Um, and sure, this part of me says, hmm, wouldn't three be better or this? But then there's part of me that says, oh, it does, you know, to, to Robert's point, it ties into a lot of what we've been talking about in walkable neighborhoods. And we're not creating new, any more new land, you know, um.
No, that's okay. But, you know, I think, and I'm kind of tend, tend to support this, but when I think about it, you know, from, as long as I stay on the zoning board. And I think I'd recommend if someone wants to, you know, put an addition close to the property line. If I, now, if I go with this one, then I would go, that would, the way I think about it, that would open up more, just, not just because I'm thinking, oh, well, an apartment here is okay. I don't really see where that fits into the whole scheme, you know, just to trump all the other factors, so. I'm thinking, oh, well, an apartment here is okay, I don't really see where that fits into the whole scheme, you know, just to trump all the other factors, so.
But, but, but you lost me with the property, cause we're not, how is that germanic, I mean, they're not, they're just using existing footprint, they're not changing.
No, no, it's just, it's just another, you know, a variance from the, the zoning bylaw, in general.
Right, but don't forget, you know, variances, the, the variance mechanism is in place, because with any bylaw, you, you're never gonna anticipate every situation. You know, you, you try as best you can, but there's always gonna be, you know, ambiguity, or just some set of variables that you just. You can't anticipate everything, there's just too many variables, um, so this, I mean, I think we're all in the same place, this, I don't see anybody said, yes, I'm definitely for this, or, you know, maybe you, you're strong against it. It's just, it is a trigger, and, you know, we can pump, we don't have to do anything with this, if we don't want to, you know, we don't have to force a decision, or, you know, or a recommendation.
Said before, I think it's good to, to voice our opinion, rather than just say that, you know, to have no comment, so I'll make a motion to amend.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Someone waving? No, okay, that's just a microphone going up and down, um, okay, all those in favor?
Anderson Eye, that's an eye.
Amos, did you vote?
Yep, I did.
Four, or again, I just didn't hear you, did, did you guys hear him? You and the others in favor, alright.
Alright, thank you, and if you have any feedback on the plans before we get to the, uh.
Can't show it's off the agenda. I do, I, I've let, just call, call, um, call in first of the week. And, uh, and we can give all sorts of feedback, but I think, I don't think we can since we pulled it off. I wanna, don't wanna violate any public meeting laws, you know?
I hear you, alright, so have a good night, everyone.
Alright, have a good night, thanks, Greg, um, okay, meeting minutes, I reviewed them and did not have, I didn't see anything, did you guys have a chance to look at them?
I did, I had okay with me.
I did, you look good.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes of.
All those in favor, Strange Eye?
That's an eye.
Okay, I lost audio, but I saw everybody moving, so I, I think we probably, I don't see anybody talking, so we must have voted. You guys, is anybody else's speed choppy, or is it just me?
It's you.
Uh, let's see, board reorganization, um, currently, Miss Buffoon is the chair, and Peter is the clerk. But we're an open board, if anybody cares to, to, um, change up.
If anyone would like to, um, get to read the public hearings and occasionally fill in as chair, you're welcome.
Good pay.
I'm in favor of keeping it as is, if, you know, Greg and Peter are okay with that.
Keep it like it is.
So, motion, alright, so, so we have a motion to keep it as is, we're so official here, it's good, I like it.
Most, motion, motion to, uh, for, uh, Mr. Strange to remain as chairman, and for Mr. DeShane to. Remain as, as the clerk.
Alright, all those in favor?
That's an eye.
But, I, I heard Robert, anybody else go? Alright, my audio's, um, alright, so board representative appointment, so planning board has two seats. Outlined by charter, one is on Community Preservation Act Committee, and I've had that seat for a long time. Um, and I don't mind doing it, I've enjoyed it, I get frustrated at times, I'm the current clerk of it, but, you know. No one's ever mentioned to me, but if, if, um, you know, that seat's open, I don't, I don't wanna be a power monger, if someone wanted to do that. Um, it's an interesting board, I would just act that you, that you'd be active in it, if nobody wants to step up, that's fine, I'll keep doing it, but, uh. Yeah, and then there's the capital planning committee, which makes no sense why a planning board has a, just because they both have planning in the title, that's. You know, and Peter was on that for years, I was on it for years, and then Peter did it, and then last year, you guys all took one step backwards, and I would look like I went forward. I, I got stuck on it, but saved by, saved by COVID anyways, we had a few fewer meetings, because Greg Strange going over budgets is, is, like. That's definitely the needle in the eye, um, so, anybody, any interest in capital planning? And any interest in CPA, anybody out there? What, Peter?
Motion for Greg Strange to remain the CPA representative.
See, you have to let me stay chair, because maybe do capital planning, and to the budget folks out there, I don't mean that badly, it's, actually, you learn a lot, so. Actually, I learned that we lose, you know, we actually, an assisted care, the town, we actually lose money every time there's a, uh. Into, cause you can't, if someone falls in that facility, it has to be a call to, uh, to the, to, uh, the EMS. Cause they're not allowed to, to pick them up, so there's dozens of those a year, so anyways, something I learned, um, alright. So, did I hear a second over my babbling?
I'll second that.
And I'll walk the plank, all those in favor? And show, cheer support, nothing much to report, um, I mean, like I say, Stephanie is coming back on Monday, um. And it sounds like in, sometime in August, we'll probably, you know, I think we'll get back on, um. We'll get back on Sawmill, uh, have a couple interesting projects coming up, I think we'll have some fun with, but they're not public yet, so I, I, I can't mention them on here. And, um, and then I imagine, Andrew, do you know anything, is there any talk of a special town meeting?
Yes, there, there was talk of, um, that the zoning articles and other articles that were considered. Budget dependent were, uh, looking to go off into a fall meeting, but the date is not determined.
But, so, you know, hopefully we can get back to our zoning, um, and when, whenever that is, so I know, but. So, anyways, that's, I hope you all had a nice fourth, and Andrea, thanks for, for helping out this week.
Certainly.
And, um, our next meeting is on July twentieth. Alright, anybody have anything to add before we say goodnight? Alright, who wants to bring us home?
Motion to adjourn.
All the, alright, awesome, thanks, guys and girls.
Thank you all.